Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 17th, and tonight we are in regular session. We'll be reading a series of ordinances, some of them for the third, some of them for the second time, some of them for the first time. Before we do that, tonight we have an opportunity for a public hearing. I believe this is the second of public hearings for the designation of the Stewart-McDonald Building located at 21 North Schaefer Street. It has been discussed in committee several times. Our economic development director, Sarah Mares-Maxfield, is here with us tonight, and I will open it. Do you have any additional comments, Councilmember Fall, before we begin the public hearing?
Just please sign the signup sheet that we have. Sarah, do you want to have a short little say about it?
Sure. Just a real brief, you know, and yeah, thank you. Seeing the glory of the building.
Over here, right?
Yep.
Correct. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and everyone else in attendance. Many of you know Stewart-McDonald has occupied the building at 21 North Schaefer Street for quite some time. They have recently purchased the building, and they are looking to completely renovate the property for the use of their manufacturing and sales for Stewart-McDonald. The building was built in the early 1900s, and it's had a long illustrious history here in Athens. And if anyone is interested, I have a narrative that we put together outlining some of the major historical milestones of the building. But we're really excited to be participating in this project. This is a very beloved company within our community. They're looking to put in about $4 million to the building in upgrades and renovations so that they can utilize the entire space. And they will be bringing all of their operations under one roof here in Athens, Ohio, so they'll be bringing some jobs from Montana and creating some new jobs as well as part of this project, so we're really excited. The state is participating in this project, the city is participating in this project, the county is participating in this project. And part of what is really important about having it designated as historically significant is we will be pursuing state and federal historic preservation tax credits to help offset the significant expense of renovating the building so that it is up to today's standards and still maintains its historical look in the community, which is very significant. Much more expensive than building a brand-new building outside of the city limits, but the company is very committed to the area, committed to the building, and so this is really kind of our big first step for those historic preservation tax credits.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome. So is there any questions?
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. I just wondered, are there any local effects on tax rates that the city would experience as a result of this?
Of this designation?
Yes.
Or then pursuing the other two tax credits? There's nothing that would impact the city tax rules?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Comments? About?
Thank you. I'll just briefly acknowledge that I've received positive support in the form of communications from some citizens that reside within the First Ward on the west side in close proximity, so they're in support of this designation. I have not received any negative feedback or thoughts regarding this, so I'm pleased as well to support this.
Great. Thank you. Part of the public hearing is hearing from anybody in the public. If you have concerns or questions or comments of any type, please come up, state your name, sign up, and you have your minutes. So, nobody? Okay. Not seeing any, I close this public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you will note that we will have a third reading of that ordinance approving the historic designation in just a few moments. Our first item of business tonight is establishing a quorum. All members of city council are present. The next item is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on September 4th. If I could have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. We now have an opportunity for communications from council members. Yes, councilmember Crowe?
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody that it is Pollution Prevention Week, and there will be a number of events going on throughout the city of Athens. On Wednesday, there will be a tap water versus bottled water taste test at the Alumni Gate. Please come by and participate. Also, on Wednesday evening, the Sustainability Film Series will be showing a film titled "The Devil We Know," and that is about an investigation of finding C8 chemical near the Dupont facility in West Virginia and the impact it's had on the residents of that area. I'd like to point out that the city of Athens has been testing its own water supply since 2014, specifically for C8, and there has been nothing found. We are, of course, upstream from that area, from the Ohio River. There will be a number of panelists after the movie speaking about the issue locally, including a member of the Office of Sustainability. And mayor, I believe, the Service Safety Director will be on the panel, Andrew Stone, will be on the panel and representing the city and the city's water supply. The importance of keeping it clean. Great? Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reisner?
Yes, I received an email from a constituent in my ward concerning an ordinance that's going to be read for the first time tonight concerning parking meters and parking. The mayor also, I believe, received a copy of that email, and he's assured me that the concerns of the citizen have been looked into and addressed.
Okay. And councilmember Butler?
Thank you. Similarly, I also received an email, but this was regarding the pilot residential parking permit program, just offering support for us to continue with the pilot program and offering their perspective in which they were thankful and supportive of the program and hoping that we continue that dialogue. Thank you.
Yes, councilmember Binkie?
Thank you. I received an email, and I believe all the council members received an email from an alternative company that was offering the parking meters at a reduced rate from the rate that was presented at the last council meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that that was not overlooked, that there is apparently a second interested company, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Katsas?
President Isley, I just wanted to mention that the next Athens City School Board meeting will be happening this Thursday. That is September 20th at 6:30 PM in the Athens High School Auditorium.
Okay, great. And we now have an opportunity for communications from other elected officials? Law Director Eliason?
No.
Okay. And I don't believe Auditor Hecht is here. Mayor Patterson?
I just have one item to share with council. I've been asked by the Director of APEC to sit on a council or sit on a panel at a series of conferences. I just attended my first one on this panel representing the city of Athens and economic development, and in particular, I was kind of showcasing how the city goes about putting together stacks of dollars that can be utilized to bring businesses here in ways that we can help as a community. And I was talking most notably about Athens Mold and Machine. I'll be speaking again in a few weeks, October 10th, up in Marietta as another follow-on. The one that I just attended was up in Cambridge, and there's a second one that I'm not able to attend, which is in Pikeston, but these are open, good meetings. I will say, I'm going to give a shout-out to our Executive Director for the Athens County Economic Development, that there was a number of people who were heaping praise upon you at that meeting because they use you as an asset to learn better ways to go about creating strong and vibrant economic communities. So, it was a great meeting to be at and to be able to, again, represent our great city in the world of economic development.
Good. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 9718, an ordinance designating the Stewart-McDonald Building located at 21 North Schaefer Street as a local historic designation, and this is introduced by councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I moved that way adopt 9718. As we heard in the presentation during the public hearing, and we have talked multiple times in other committee meetings, this is a positive first step in helping to anchor that area for future economic development and also working with an amazing company and a really amazing building. Questions?
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a quick question.
Yes, councilmember?
Is there an open house at the building today? Does anyone know? I thought that we had discussed an open house on the 17th.
No, that's the public hearing.
Oh, that's this?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough, I'm here.
They plan on having one of my 70s.
Do they? Okay. Great.
And councilmember Katsas?
Yes, and I believe this is somewhat related because everything is always connected, but I hope that administration and engineering is also working with Stewart-McDonald as they move forward because I believe that, you know, they're bringing in some of their stuff from outside the city, so they're introducing a different layout. And I don't know if that, you know, looking at how the streets are, the loading docks, things like that, they may not necessarily be the same as what they are currently, so I hope that engineering and everybody kind of has their eye on that as we move forward because, of course, the building is connected to the sidewalks, which is connected to the street, so if we can make sure that that still stays in the conversation.
Mayor Patterson?
Well, the plans for the property itself have come before the Planning Commission already, and the Planning Commission has approved what we saw, but we're always engaging, not only with Stewart-McDonald, but with everyone who starts to develop in the city of Athens, from Menards to Steak 'n Shake to a very beautiful historic building. So, we are, we're tracking on.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions that anyone from the audience might have? Okay. We have the motion and second, and we'll now have the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have a series of first readings. Excuse me, second reading. And this is for ordinance 118, an ordinance authorizing construction and construction or engineering services for the Richland Bridge over Coates Run, which is project number 321. This is introduced by councilmember Katsas. And we'll just, we'll move on.
Yes.
And we are not suspending on that tonight. Any other comments or questions? I have a brief opportunity. We'll have an opportunity at the third reading next week also. Ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 10118 is an ordinance amending ordinance 7518, authorizing engineering, construction, and construction engineering services for the Northwest Bike Way Spur Phase III, project 296, introduced by councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. As we remember back to last week, we have found that the project, which is Phase III, going from Armitage Road up to University Estates, this is the third phase of the bike path that goes up into that neighborhood, it's going to be $100,000 more than what was first anticipated. Because of protection of the stream, we have to build more retaining walls, and also there's some habitat up there that needs to be protected, which actually I believe is what forced the realignment of the path and the retaining walls. So that $100,000 is specifically in construction, and there was a request for suspension. I would like to wait and suspend on the second read so that we can have more of a discussion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council members or administration? Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I would just like to offer my support for this project. We have a wonderful bike path and bike trail system throughout Athens, and this will continue and enhance what we already have. It's widely used. I've met people from all over southeast Ohio that seek out our trail. And this is something as well, too, that's been discussed for a number of years. Councilmember Pappy had also been aware of this when she was on council and was sitting in councilmember Katsas' seat as the Chair of the Transportation Committee, so I know that Mr. Stone has done a good job communicating with us over the years regarding these phases and this being Phase III. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Yes, councilmember Reisner?
I just want to make, get it clear that the transportation fund lines can handle this extra $100,000 hit. They can?
I also asked that question last week, and I checked in with our Director for Engineering and Public Works, and the money's there.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thanks for double-checking. Yes, councilmember Katsas?
And I'm sorry, let me just add one more point. The suspension is requested because they would like to get it out to bid this fall, which then means that we could, we would probably have a better chance of seeing the bids fall within the projected amount.
Okay. Okay, good. So we'll see this again in two weeks. So ordinance, yes, councilmember Grace?
I also support this project, and I think it will be a great addition for the neighborhood to be able to access the bike path from University Estates, but I am a little bit concerned because it's a dramatic increase in the city's contribution, and so I just want to express that I found that that much of an increase in the contribution or to the expense from the city is concerning, and I don't, it's unfortunate that it comes at a point where we're well into and really committed wanting to complete this project, that it's going, you know, adding $100,000 to the cost for the city. So I would love to see more information and details as far as what the changed path is and more information on the reasons for it, like why was it discovered at this point in the project? Like, why didn't we know earlier in the project what these issues were going to be? So I don't know who might have.
We can get that information, too.
Yeah, I would just appreciate knowing. Thank you.
It was a surprise to us when we learned that trees in the interior needed to be preserved and saved and have to realign where the bike path actually goes through the property. That was one of the primary causes for that, and again, it wasn't something that we had been notified about nor tracking, and I have to say, for as many years as this project has been underway with all the phases, and now this being the last phase, and then it's done. The Northwest Bike Path Spur is complete. This was just viewed on our end as one more hurdle, an expensive one, but one more hurdle that we have to surmount to be able to get this bike path through and up to University Estates. I can get you all the information that you would like on the layout of the trail up there, as well as the information that we received as to why we had to rethink this. Jessica Dine will have the floor. Jessica Dine, I have to say, our city engineer has done an outstanding job of staying on top of this project and understanding, too, some of these challenges that have really, haven't been encountered like this before in trying to put essentially a component to a complete street on up to University Estates. I'll get you what you need.
Might be helpful to have a graphic. I would agree, that we can show on screen to share with the audience next week, too. Good. Councilmember Bee?
I would second Ms. Grace's concerns. I was looking at the details in the ordinance itself. Apparently, the expenditure is about a half a million dollars and $300,000 of that is apparently being paid by the state, so it looks like $241,000 is being paid by the city. And I had a question. Sometimes I don't understand what you mean by spur. The mayor has indicated this is basically a turn-off benefiting University Estates. Is this the kind of thing that the public would be using, other than the people from the University Estates?
They could.
But not likely? I mean, it's basically a new road for University Estates?
Well, we have a significant population that lives up at University Estates, and so it's, but that doesn't mean that my family and I might decide we're going to just ride up to University Estates and go check out the other neighborhoods in the city by using that, so, I mean, it's open to anybody, as all of the bike path is, but it's a needed asset, you know, to make it, to really provide active transportation up to University Estates. At this point, you know, realistically, it's cars, you know, to be able to get up and get down. It's not the safest place in the world to be walking along the shoulder if you're coming down from University Estates and trying to get to West Union or wherever, but this bike path spur will certainly help with that. And we're calling it a spur because it ends up at University Estates.
So it's a relatively short distance is what we're talking about?
Yeah. I don't have that number in front of me either, Member McGee, in terms of, you know, how many feet long this spur will be at the end, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilmember Fall?
I think that this has also been in the planning realm for a long time, and University Estates is the city, and so they are citizens. I think that also, when you look at the bigger picture, another arm of our bike path is great because then it makes so that there's more regional connectivity, because there is talk about, besides the Belle Pri to, you know, Athens Rail Trail that's being developed by the county and Belle Pri, that there's the Moonville Rail Trail System, and that this potentially can feed into that, which is huge for Athens. You don't know how many people come and do Bruton the Bike Way. Thousands of people, and it's one of our most growing sector, and if we can provide for active transportation for a whole neighborhood and also expanding one of our tourist draws, then I think it's a win-win. And there's also a spring, you know, sometimes when you open up an old building, you find out that there's bad things inside and that you have to replace the plumbing instead of just fixing it. I think that's any time you go and do these complicated programs and developments. And there was a slip in the area, there's an active spring in the area, and it is, you know, a difficult design environment, so I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler?
Another thought that you know mine to add for public interest in this discussion as well was, I guess maybe approximately nine years ago, Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan was created, and there was a lot of public input and a number of public meetings, and within that, there was discussion regarding the public's interest in enhancing bicycle and pedestrian safety and mechanisms for increasing access within the community via bike and foot. And so Safety Director Stone and Engineer Dine are just, in my opinion, following through with the requests and the guidelines that were determined at that time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Katsas?
I know we all want to go home at some point, but, you know, and, you know, there's, well, just two things. One is, when you think about a paved path, an asphalt surface path, usually, it's usually about $2 million per every mile. This one is probably a little bit more expensive just because of the grade that they're dealing with and they're having to do retaining walls, so that the distance is probably extremely short. Number two, because I don't, once again, I don't know the actual linear foot distance, the second thing is using that, you know, having that at-large council hat on and knowing that, you know, if we can provide the same services to different parts of the city, I think it's always something that we should strive for and look towards. So, yes, I agree with also Member Fall in that sometimes you get into a home project and it turns out to be a little bit more than anticipated, and sometimes you're lucky and you hit the budget, and sometimes you don't. I do have one question, though, for administration in that the, and correct me with the history on this, but I believe that the Columbus Road Bike Way Spur ended up costing more than what was anticipated, and I believe ODOT, did ODOT come through with more funds to fund that project?
I don't recall if they did or not. I can certainly get back to you on that as well, but that was, that particular spur was a very expensive spur.
Yes.
And largely because of the bridge construction over the Hocken River. It was, but again, it was to enhance our bikeability, walkability, just connectivity within the city, much like this Northwest Bike Path Spur. I can find out for you.
Okay.
I do recall something, but I can't reach that far back to grab my city council hat.
Yeah, yeah. Gets dusty fast. Thank you.
Councilmember McGee?
Just one little comment, and in a way, I support this bike spur because I like the fact that the public can park up there and use that spur and go to Little Fish when there are not parking spaces, so I think the public needs to be aware there's that opportunity. Some of the places, like the Columbus Road Spur, I know there's a problem with parking for someone who would be driving there, unless that's been fixed. I know in the past there was a problem with parking.
We certainly would like to get 83 Columbus Road fixed up to where we can drive into a parking area.
I mean, it's a wonderful spur, I should say, and it's a great project.
I agree with you 100%.
Okay. We've had lots of comments and questions from council members and administration, and do we have any comments or questions from the audience? Okay. See it in a few weeks.
All right.
10218 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to lease/purchase smart parking meters. This is introduced by councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. So this is the first ordinance starting to talk about our change in our parking uptown. So, the Planning Committee and Paul Logue, along with Assistant Service Safety Director Ron Lucas, were here last week to talk about this. It's a sweeping change. There's a lot of different parts to this. This is basically to authorize and enter into a contract lease/purchase program with smart parking meters, and so this would allow the Service Safety Director the ability to go out and it'd be the first step that he would be able to start contacting and contracting with, in the ordinance, it states the lowest and best bidders in this process to find a company that would be providing a lease, a five-year lease for the smart meters.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions from council members, administration? Mayor Patterson?
Just a comment, and that is, knowing that there was another vendor who came in with an interesting price that was very low. We did do some research on that particular company, and there were some features that the meters that are being piloted now on Court Street have that this other vendor's meters do not, so some of the functionality is not there with this other vendor. However, that all said, we certainly will probably put out an RFP, Request for Proposals, with what our criteria is as we're looking at smart meters in the city of Athens, and we'll probably incorporate in some of the comments that I, too, received from a citizen in the Second Ward who had some concerns over. Some of them are fixes on our end in that the poles are too high. That's true. We weren't going to cut them down now under the pilot program just to screw our other meter heads back on if we were to go back to that. Now we have meters that are this high off the ground and some that are up here. But the background feature on the meter heads making it difficult to read, that's something that we can certainly address with any of the vendors out there to where we have a good readable display.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from the audience? All right. Ordinance 10318 is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parking Regulations. This is introduced by councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I think that I'll just open it up for questions and questions. I think that I'll just open it up for questions and comments for the first reading. I know that a lot of people got communications from people in the city. So I just want to open it up because I think there was new information and that we wanted to go forward with people's concerns. So is there anybody who wants to go first? No? Okay. Okay. How about this side? Nobody wants to go? Okay.
Okay.
Patrick?
Hello, I'm always. I have some concerns about the three major changes in the parking. My understanding is the rates go up, the hours go up for the enforceability. And perhaps my greatest concern is the fact that the meters themselves will basically eat any extra time so that citizens will no longer have the ability to receive any kind of free parking if they happen to luck upon that. That's always something I've considered. You know, it's made my day more than once, putting it mildly. And, you know, I I regret that the city is doing that, taking that away in the name of technological progress. I know the city has mentioned that, or at least the, when the presentation was presented to us, it was mentioned that this, the purpose of this was not to raise money for the city. It was not a fundraiser, but to basically pay for certain increased costs. And the main thing being, of course, to provide citizens with the options to park and pay for that parking through the credit cards and and cell phones and things, which I commend. I think that's a great thing. Again, I'm not sure whether it can be separated, whether that third aspect to allow the the meters to actually allow that extra time to be there for the next citizen who might park there. If it is possible, I think that should be done, but I don't see in this particular conglomeration any kind of thing that would allow that. So that's my concern.
Other questions?
The presentation that we got last week, Assistant Director Lucas showed projected revenues, current revenues, projected, and so on. It was a little confusing, but I finally got it figured out thanks to Councilmember Fall and Councilmember Grace. I just want to be clear that the, any additional revenues will go into the the lines for for parking streets and so on. It doesn't go into the general fund, does it?
Because it's an encumbered, or it's a proprietary. It's a proprietary. Into parking enforcement, parking maintenance, parking management.
Yes.
Not only on the streets, but also in the parking garage. About to act as a seed source of future funding for other parking projects the city may do.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Question here.
Yes. My question revolves around the 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 current staff. Are we going to have to increase staffing levels to to monitor into later into the evening?
At this point, we're not, because we are down one parking enforcement officer. And so we have a possibility of rethinking shifts for individuals to cover, you know, coming in later in the day and then working until eight for enforcement. Here, a thing, too, with this, with, and this is with any smart meters or cities that have, you know, smarter technologies that are monitoring these things, part on the backend for this particular system that we're using, and likely this is, you might find this in others as well, is that it makes for more efficient monitoring of of meters that may be expired or not, so that it's it's really making the parking enforcement officers more efficient as to where they're going. Currently, with the old meters, they're checking every single one as they're going on down. And so therefore, that kind of frees up their time to be able to be more agile as a parking meter expires.
Just like our trashcans. It's collecting data, and it's telling us where where we can work smarter.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
The world of technology.
Okay. I have no questions. Do we have any other, any questions or comment? Oh, we have one more council member, and then we'll have the audience.
Just wanted to bring forward a concern that I had received as far as the changing the time from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and how that might impact residents of the city who wanted to come to park for dining. And I know from the perspective of, one perspective, we have employees who work at those restaurants that park there, thus making the street parking not available for customers. But then there are also customers who feel like, oh, hey, if I go after 6:00, it's free parking. And while this particular ordinance does not deal with garage parking, there'd been the suggestion perhaps offset by maybe reducing fees or reducing the hours that are enforced for the meters in the parking garage. And so I just wanted to bring that up as something to consider with changes to parking garage, is that if if we sort of offset the increased cost and enforcement hours on the street, part of our goal with that is to encourage parking in the garage, so maybe add to that incentives on the the other end.
Okay. Thank you.
We are open to exploring things like that, or it could be a business besides, you know, let me get 10 parking passes for the, you know, upper parking decks, you know, upper and lower five, upper and lower six. In the evening, you know, there's crickets up there. People aren't typically parking up there unless it's a big event weekend. And therefore, you know, I think that that's something that we're exploring as well, reaching out to the the businesses that typically have their employees parking in front of them. But, you know, you you hit the nail on the head. I mean, that's the thing that I'm always kind of confused by, dumbfounded by, I guess, is that, you know, you have Restaurant X sitting there, and then you've got employees that are parking there after 6:00 p.m., and you're literally taking away of, you know, curbside parking for some of the businesses. And so we're hoping that this is a way to help free that up, to help with economic development in the uptown area when it comes to restaurants wanting to continue to thrive.
Okay. I think we have a comment, yeah, a question from the audience. If you could let us know your name and address.
Judith Roman, 12 Northwood Drive. As I said last week, I disagree with this. 8 o'clock is too too much time. I mean, 6 o'clock is fine. If people want to go out to dinner, like Sarah said, you know, they like that, the idea that they can go out after 6:00 and find a place to park. So this is just going to go through? I mean, everybody's just going to vote it through without any regard to what the residents of the city say? Is that up to all councilpeople to to contact people in your ward and see what they think? Or is it just going to get passed? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. All right. We have some, sure, Robert.
So I'm Robert Galak, 124 Morris Avenue here in the city. One thing I'd like to point out is that the parking study done by the city planner staff was, they did a great job with that. There's a couple of conclusions they came to. One was the smart metering is a great idea. Another one was to encourage turnover of the parking spaces in the street, and that's being addressed here. The third thing is the parking garage and how to push people to the parking garage. To use that as a resource more because it's definitely underutilized. And I agree with Councilmember Grace that that's something that needs to be investigated. It seems missing here. I'd like to see that addressed in some way. Again, it could be from, right now, 24 hours a day for six days a week, there's, quote, enforcement in the parking garage, but literally, there really isn't enforcement beyond certain hours. Some people know this and don't pay for parking there after hours, knowing that there is no real enforcement. So it seems like a weird thing to have that set up as 24/6 enforcement, and it's not really being enforced like that. Why not open that up after hours for free parking and encourage people to use that instead of the streets? I think that's a good approach to make here. The other thing I'd like to mention is that we have several documents now that have talked about bicycle parking in uptown. The master plan, the parking study mentions bicycle parking and a need for bicycle parking, and the sustainability plan for the city also mentions bicycle parking and a need for bicycle parking and sets some goals for bicycle parking in uptown. And we have made almost no progress on that since I've been in Athens, which is almost two years now. We have one new bike rack, which is great to have that rack at the corner near Witz. But that's just a baby step. And one thing I'd like to see here is the potential, depending on the funding, and I know we talked about funding earlier here, and what the money, revenue from the increased fees could be used for, I'd like to at least have the city consider that some of those, that revenue could be used to improve bicycle parking opportunities in the city. It is certainly a dire need. I've heard it from our business owners in the city as well, that we need to come up with a plan and start trying to work towards improving that here. And hopefully, the revenue from this parking ordinance could be leveraged to improve that, I would hope.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay. Move on to Ordinance 10418, an ordinance authorizing design services for the wastewater treatment plant, de-watering project number 320, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I'm going to jog our memories a little bit because it's been a while since we've talked about this. And I I welcome comments as well from my colleagues up here. So I think, I believe it's been a few months since this came up at committee meeting. Specifically, this ordinance would authorize the City Service Safety Director to expand up, to expend up to $170,000 from the sewer maintenance fund for this project design. And the benefit of moving forward and being proactive with looking at de-watering projects, there's a number of, a number of talking points. Currently, and again, this is not my area of expertise, nor my bailiwick, but with sludge from our, from our wastewater treatment plant, we are near capacity with field space where we take said sludge to decompose. And the benefit of moving forward towards a wastewater de-watering, towards a de-watering project is beneficial on a few levels. By removing water from the sludge, it makes it lighter, which also lessens the amount of cost with freight and shipping, and is proactive on another, number of levels with concerns regarding regulations and governmental interactions. I don't know if there's a few other talking points that either the mayor would like to offer or other councilmembers, but this is something that we brought up, like I said, a number of months ago, and the administration would like to move forward with this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. This is basically designed for removing water out of the sludge. Yep. Mayor Patterson. It's a strange topic, de-watering, but that's okay.
It is, and it is what it is. It's, what we're looking at is, you know, a couple of possibilities. One would be a centrifuge, which would help de-water. We currently are using belt presses to help de-water our sludge as well. The more we can get the moisture content down, as you can imagine, the the less it weighs to freight it off to wherever, whether it's field application or, in some cases, to landfill. But again, all those have costs associated with them, so that will help, again, whether it's a belt press, a centrifuge, a combination of all of the above. I do want to report to council, some of you may have been tracking, we did apply for the CDBG, Critical Infrastructure Grant, with a de-watering solution for the for the wastewater treatment plant. And we were, we were given notice that we did not get that grant, but we were strongly encouraged to reapply. So we're reapplying for the second cycle, and they gave us some valuable information as to what we can do to strengthen our application moving forward. So we are going to reapply. So you'll probably see that again come forward. But we just received notice, I think it was midweek last week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Yes, and Councilmember Fall.
At some point, could you get how much sludge we're talking about in a year? I mean, is it?
Sure. Sure.
How many millions of pounds or, you know, tons?
I can do that for you.
Thank you. And then that kind of just gives people an idea about one of the systems that they rely on in the city.
Well, and clearly, as you can imagine, the amount, you know, fluxes a lot throughout the year, you know, come from spring until fall. It drops way down, but but is, student body comes back, it goes way up again. So, but I can certainly get you some numbers. I could even give it to you quarterly if we have it, but I can certainly get you the numbers.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 10418 is an ordinance authori, excuse me, 10518, an ordinance amending the 2018 staffing levels authorized by Ordinance 15117 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance is really sort of a little bit of bookkeeping, housekeeping. We have two custodians who work at the, our community center, and they draw their their wages out of Fund 271. What we're doing here is, since one of the custodians spends a quarter of their time at the, on recreational property like the pool and so on, to move them to a a full-time equivalent of .25, and thereby reducing the the current 2.0 full-time equivalent in Fund 271 down to 1.75. So we're not increasing funding or anything, we're just simply making a move from one, from 271 to 270.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. We'll now move on to announcements and other business. We do have the August 2018 auditors' reports, which were distributed to councilmembers. And if I can have a motion to approve or accept those financial reports.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second for accepting the auditors' reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, they've been accepted. We will have committees next week. I know that we have several presentations with the Committee of the Whole. We have Title 35, Public Rights of Way. We have a presentation from legal firm Ice Miller. We'll also have a presentation by the Athens Farmers Market. Those will be under Committee of the Whole. And we do have planning and development scheduled to meet, also transportation, as well as finance and personnel.
And city service.
You do need city service?
I believe so. Fire chief, conversations about a few things.
Okay, okay, thank you. Full evening. Great.
Should be brief.
Good. Okay. I also wanted to announce that the Community Relations Commission, which is a commission of the city, does currently have two openings. And so anybody who's interested can submit a short biographical statement or a resume to the Clerk of Council, and we'd be more than willing to look at people who are interested in serving on that commission. It's a three-year appointment. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
And hopefully, as we get the Housing Appeals Commission reconstituted again, I believe there's two positions, two alternate positions that we are open.
That are open on that one.
Right. And for that, there is some specifics within that particular piece of legislation, and that is that they have to live in the city of Athens. You have to be a resident in the city.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Are there any other announcements? Okay, all right. Right now, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda. So anyone who wants their three minutes to speak may do so. And this is a moment to take a public comment, so we don't usually engage in dialogue, but very glad to have people here to make comments, and we'll listen to them. And you have three minutes if you'd like to come up. And if you could give us your name and address and the group that you represent, please.
Hi, my name is John Slosser. My address is 10 Bell Iron Street here in Athens. I'm the Governmental Affairs Commissioner of Student Senate, speaking here tonight to establish a dialogue between City Council and Student Senate to maintain establish a dialogue between City Council and Student Senate, to maintain relationships between students and administration at City Council. Just to kind of introduce ourselves, Parker, one of my colleagues is going to speak here in a minute, just to say hello. I think it'd be a great opportunity to, again, start a dialogue between City Council and Student Senate. Thank you.
Great.
Just piggybacking off of what John said, we really just want to come, introduce ourselves. My name is Parker Smith. I'm a senior. I'm the Off-Campus Affairs Commissioner for Student Senate this year. I live at 85 West State, Unit B. And really, just coming, we're hoping to build a more productive relationship in which we can explore areas of potential collaboration between the city, the university, and the students, especially as it relates to safety and protection of student rights, especially in the wake of recent, you know, reports of sexual assault and rape on and off campus. But also searching for input and ideas related to the way that students are impacting the community and disrupting, you know, day-to-day life for residents and how we can work with you to, to improve that relationship. And more broadly, just building a more hopefully engaging, lasting, and more permanent, we would like to really build a constant dialogue between the students and the city. And that's something we feel has been lacking and has not really existed in our time here in the past couple of years. So just kind of getting the ball rolling on it and introducing ourselves. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to take an opportunity to speak on any topic? All right. Well, thank you very much. It's been an interesting meeting. We'll meet again next week then in committee meeting. Motion to adjourn, please.
Some moves.
Okay, we have a motion in second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
I assume none opposed, so motion carries. We'll adjourn at 7:51 p.m. Thank you very much.